I'll call the June 17, 2020 meeting. The Lebanon City Council took order. City Manager Mahon, would you give the standard spiel?
This meeting is going to conduct our State 91A and Run the Short Number 12 issued by the Governor of the State of Hampshire in regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. The council is not meeting in person, other than the two councils that are at the room at present time. The public is not allowed to participate in person, however, they are allowed to participate virtually through video link or by phone. Those persons who are participating by phone, if you wish to speak when the time is announced by the mayor to allow for public comment, simply dial *6, that will unmute your phone, and that will allow you to speak. So if you need to speak, say, or ask questions as appropriate.
Thank you very much. Councilor Broner, would you give us the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the individual religion, to justice for all.
Thank you. Any member of the public bizarre to speak on any item, they do so when the item is taken up by the council. You'll be allowed to speak on the subject for not more than three minutes. We ask you to state your name. We don't take anonymous comments. Ward residents if you live in Lebanon. And we will start the meeting tonight with our open to the public for any items that are not on the agenda. So if someone from the public or the council for that matter has an item that they would like to speak to briefly that is not on the agenda, please do so now. Remember, dial *6 if you're on the phone and you wish to speak. Okay. I hear nothing.
Mayor McInerney, this is Karen.
Yes.
Leo Hill.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted, thank you. I was waiting to see if someone else from the public wanted to speak. I wanted to read, or I wanted to mention that on Facebook, a constituent earlier this week, Corey Armstrong, shared an interaction that he had with Lebanon Police Department where he had sent an email inquiry to Lebanon police to ask them about, A, their use of body worn cameras, and B, their employment of evidence-based de-escalation training. He got a prompt reply, which I have also shared on my Facebook page, but I wanted to publicly thank the police department for the quick reply. And I'll just mention that what the response was, was that Lebanon PD requires all officers to wear body worn cameras and to activate them anytime they're responding to a call, which includes traffic stops and other officer-initiated encounters in casual conversation on the street or whatever they aren't required to unless that interaction escalates for some reason. Regarding de-escalation training, all Lebanon PD officers receive this during their initial training with the New Hampshire Police Training Academy. Additionally, Lebanon provides crisis intervention training, which officers are required to complete on a yearly basis, along with annual training on all use of force measures. He went on to thank the PD for their prompt reply and talked about where the idea came for his sending that email to Lebanon police. But I just wanted to mention that. I wanted to thank Corey Armstrong for taking that initiative to reach out to the police department, and I also wanted to thank the police department for responding, for being responsive, so that he could get the answers that he wanted and then share them publicly. So just wanted to say that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Hill? Okay. Yes, you need to go to roll call vote tonight. So, ticker for present, let's do roll call vote. Council Heistin? Council Heistin? I can see you. Need to unmute yourself. Okay. Council Heistin, can you announce your presence, please?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Council Sykes? Here is, Council Sykes is not present this evening. Council Hill?
Council Hill, present.
Thank you. Council Prentice?
Council Prentice, present.
Thank you. I see Council Broner here in the room. Council Zook?
Council Zook is present.
Council Beal? He was here, but he left momentarily. I presume he'll be back. Okay, Council Beal will hopefully be back. Counselor Winnie?
Counselor Winnie is present.
Okay, looks like we've got seven of nine present anticipating at least eight of nine. Okay, we have no recognitions this evening. Our first item is acceptance of the minutes of the June 3, 2020 meeting. Does anyone have any comments on these minutes?
Counselor Winnie?
Yes, Counsel Winnie, please.
I wasn't present for this, so I've got a couple, just typographic sort of thing, and a couple of questions. First one, page nine of the packet, line 28. Sentence actually starts on 27. It says, "The city does not currently have an application fee." I believe that should be currently at the start of line 28.
Mm-hmm.
Page 13 of the packet, line 25, says, "These charges after a formal," and then there's a comma, and so I assume there's supposed to be something like a motion or a, something there.
Yeah, I think it's inquiry, or perhaps the manager could, seeing as that's his statement, could amplify on this a bit. I'll hold on to it.
I'm sorry. What was that on? Counselor Winnie?
Page 13, line 25.
Said you would abate these charges after a formal on the record approval from the council.
You need a review or something in there.
Yeah, there's, I don't, again, I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know exactly what was said, but it just struck me that there was something missing.
The energy's pulling it up now. All right. It's 13, line 25, right? Yes. That's June 3, minute twenty. Right, it says 11, page 11 to 14 at the top, but it's 11. Okay, hold on a second. Sorry. Mr. Broner said that he would abate these charges after a formal on the record approval from the council. Yeah, that is correct. Counselor Winnie?
Okay.
You have another one? Item?
Yeah, two more. One is same, same page, line 43. It says, "This ordinance shall be effective upon passage." It sounds like that's a reference to the previous motion, which is to schedule a public hearing as opposed to an ordinance, so I didn't know if that fit quite right there. It seemed odd to me on my reading.
That was actually on the original agenda.
Okay. And then the last one is on page 14, line 34, looks to me like it's a leading space, but it's kind of hard to tell, so. That's it.
I had a couple of items on the first page of the minutes, line 15 and 16. I went back to my original notes for the comments I made, and the sentence which begins at the end of line 14 and goes on to line 15 should say, "In his opinion, comma, it was yet another example of the state of racial inequality," not state of inequity, but state of racial inequality, that has haunted our nation for, is now hundreds of years. Line, the next line, 16, "The protests that have followed the killing of Mr. Floyd show," not shows, "show clearly." And then on line 17, where it says racism and inequality, should say racism and racial inequality, other than that it's an accurate depiction of what I said. Anyone else have any comments on these minutes? Would someone like to make a motion?
Counselor Winnie?
Yes, please do, Counsel Winnie.
Move to approve the minutes as presented in the June 17, 2020 Agenda Packet.
Okay, you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Winnie makes the motion. Heistin, seconds.
Modifications with the, assuming with the edits that have been made?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it's the June 3 minutes.
Take a roll call vote. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin, voice aye.
Thank you. Counselor Hill?
Yes. Counselor Hill, yes.
Counsel Prentice?
Counsel Prentice, yes.
Counsel Broner? Broner says yes. Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Counselor Beal? Counsel Beal? I can see him. Counsel Beal?
He's trying to. He must, he's, I think he gave a thumbs up.
Give him a thumbs up.
Does thumbs up count? I think that.
Visual information from Counsel Beal. Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
Counsel Sykes, I believe, has joined us.
Counsel Sykes says aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item we have are appointments, and we have several this evening. The first is Don Lacy as a reappointment to a regular member of the Conservation Commission, and Mr. Lacy was interviewed by Counsel Winnie. Counselor Winnie, would you like to speak to this and make a nomination?
Certainly. I had a great conversation with Mr. Lacy. He's been involved on the Conservation Commission for quite some time. He seems to have a real passion for the work that they do, and so I heartily endorse him for reappointment to the Conservation Commission.
So you're, you're making that nomination then, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments on Mr. Lacy's nomination reappointment?
Tim?
Yes, Counsel Heistin?
Don is very active, especially concerned about invasive plants. He's also licensed to eradicate plants next to water and has several projects that have been ongoing for several years that he keeps working on to eradicate them. He's a big asset for the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments on this nomination? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Heistin?
Counsel Heistin votes aye.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Counsel Prentice?
Counsel Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Counsel Beal? Counsel Beal?
Yeah.
Did you say?
His mouth is moving.
Yes, I see that.
But that could be another thumbs up.
Can you give us a thumbs up, Counsel Beal? Or thumbs down? Thumbs up, that would be yes.
Yep.
And Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Mayor McInerney votes aye. That makes it unanimous. Okay, the next appointment we have is Rebecca Foster. This is a reappointment as a regular member of the Arts and Culture Commission, and Ms. Foster was interviewed by Counsel Broner. Counsel Broner, would you like to speak to this and potentially make a motion?
Yes, I spoke with Rebecca Foster. She's been a member of this commission, and she is from West Lebanon, has been personally involved with trying to get arts and culture events going on in West Lebanon. She's very interested, and I endorse her. I make, make the nomination, and she here reappointed.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments on Ms. Foster? Hearing done, we'll take a vote. Counsel Heistin?
Counsel Heistin votes aye.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Counsel Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Counsel Beal, thumbs up or thumbs down? Can't see your thumb yet. Thumbs up. Counsel Beal votes yes. Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Mayor McInerney votes aye. Ms. Foster's reappointed to the Arts and Culture Commission. Our second appointment is also for the Arts and Culture Commission. This is Ben Van Lee, who I understand was interviewed by Counsel Prentice. Counsel Prentice, would you like to speak to this?
I would like to. So on June 16th, I interviewed, not June, May 16th, I interviewed Ben. He, and I'd like to recommend him for reappointment. He's in the arts organization for a one-year term, so he'd be reappointed for, I believe, the one-year term. Ben has been, I always say, he's been a part of this since the start. He served on the task force that led up to the commission. He's the executive director of the Upper Valley Music Center. He's also a musician, but you know, I find it, I mean, he's, he's very dedicated. He understands the importance of coordinating and mobilizing the cultural economy downtown, how that not just impacts our city, but the region. And we spent some time also talking about how his not-for-profit has adapted during COVID, and he was taught, so it wasn't, it was just relative to the overall conversation, how you have to adapt when things change, and he talked about doing music lessons through Zoom. It was fascinating, but he's a great, he's, we're lucky to have Ben serving on the commission, and I again recommend his reappointment.
Thank you very much. So you're making that motion then?
Bingo, yes.
Okay.
Bingo's appropriate, so yes, I'm making that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a voice vote. Counsel Heistin?
Counsel Heistin votes aye.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Prentice?
Yeah, Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Counselors Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Beal?
Counselor Beal votes yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry, I've been having technical difficulties.
That's all right. Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
Thank you. And Mayor McInerney votes aye, so that's unanimous. Our last appointment for tonight is Andy Key to the Economic Development.
Andy Key, local business owner, and his, his father run key, earth worker, Dr. Key.
Dr. Key.
Yeah. They've actually been working for the city. He's lived in Lebanon his entire life, and I think he will be a good addition to the Economic Development Commission, and I wish him to be appointed.
Thank you. So I would also like to say that I've known Andy for a long time. I'm embarrassed to say he, he is a peer of my children in school, so I guess that dates me, but great young man, and glad to see him back here in Lebanon, and thrilled to see that he's seeking an appointment on the Economic Development Commission. Any other comments on Andy Key? Okay, hearing done, we'll take a voice vote. Counsel Heistin?
Counsel Heistin votes aye.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Beal?
Counselor Beal votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Mayor McInerney votes aye as well, so Andy is appointed to the Economic Development Commission. Congratulations. Okay, that moves us on to public hearing items. We have only one tonight. That's Ordinance 2020-09, and this is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to amend City Code Chapter 68 Fees, Article 3, Miscellaneous Fees, Section 68-15, enumeration of fees, to allow exemptions of the fixed charge for three-quarter inch and one-inch water meters serving fire suppression systems and one and two-family residential dwelling units. And would staff like to make a presentation? I know we've heard this before, but maybe the first option we're gonna call it.
Yeah, so the purpose of this is to allow for those properties, those, particularly the single-family residential, but also the dual-family structures that had, were required at one time to put water meters in, and those who may, well, no longer required, but may choose to do so, there's a fixed meter charge for those larger-sized meters that are required for those systems. And the only purpose of that is to allow sufficient water pressure to be able to meet the fire suppression needs. Otherwise, those structures are not using, they don't have a need for the larger-sized water meters that have one particular purpose. And what this change would allow, this minute would allow for, would be to allow those three-quarter and one-inch meter sizes, those people to charge the regular five-inch, five-inch meter size, which is typical of a single-family residential unit. This would allow for that exemption for those property owners, it would take effect upon passage. And then, of course, the questions that normally go along with that, what about those folks in the first quarter that paid that higher rate? And we talked about the last couple of times, presumably if the council approves this measure, they would request me to go and abate those, and then I would go and do that for those who request those abatements. We'd instead notice out to all those people so they'd be aware of that process to do that. It's a simple form of law, just as an inquiry and further action of the map. And that would be if those particular properties have no other need for that large meter size other than for the fire suppression system, which are probably almost all of those.
Okay? This is a public hearing. I will open this meeting now to the public. If you have a comment, please feel free to dial it and speak up. Are there any members of the public who want to comment? Remember, dial *6, and then I'll allow you, I'll unmute you and allow you to speak on this matter. Okay, hearing no public comment on this public hearing on this. Sorry? Is there someone there?
Yes, there is.
Oh, please be. Sorry, if you could identify yourself.
Sure, this is Eric Hammond, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we can just barely hear you.
Oh, here, hold on one second. How's that? Is that better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you please re-say your last name again?
Sure, my name's Eric Hammond. I live over here on 23 Peabody Street, right by ATD.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. First off, thank you for allowing me to, my moment here, Mr. Mayor, and secondly, I'd like to thank the entire city council for being what I consider to be very, very proactive in this matter, and even though that this may have been an unforeseen circumstance, I'd like to personally applaud the city council for taking quick steps to try to rectify and remedy this issue. Obviously, now everybody can identify there was, there was an issue. My only, my only question for you, sir, basically, or for any of you folks in the city council is, from the moment, if, after tonight, if you folks unanimously or vote this to pass, and I'm sure that what basically would happen is we'd probably be sent abatement paperwork, and my next question is, how long of a process before those of us who have been affected for the better part of a year or more, before we start to see maybe that, that residual effect where it actually starts, we start getting accredited?
Sure, perhaps the manager could address that. Yeah, this, this only applies to the first quarter of 2020. That's when the change took effect. So we got the first quarter, and obviously the second quarter here, that bill will be coming out sometime in July, so it would affect both of those quarters. Again, as soon as this action is taken by the council, we would send those letters out, and the form is, it's a one-page form, you fill it out, send it in, and then I'll simply sign those and issue those abatements, and the credits would be issued to the county. If we can get it fast enough, that would happen for the second quarter bill went out. So you would see that abatement on the amount you've paid for your first quarter bill, so that'd be applied against your second quarter bill.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Anyone else in the public? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing on this. Councillors, we've heard this a couple of times now. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments, or would someone like to make a motion? Yes? Counsel Prentice?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Move that the Lebanon City Council hereby adopts Ordinance 2020-09 to amend City Code Chapter 68 Fees, Article 3, Section 68.15, 15, enumeration of fees to exempt the fixed charge for three-quarter inch and one-inch meters serving one- and two-family residential dwelling units that contain a fire suppression system.
Thank you. Someone like to second that?
I'll second that motion.
Counsel Sykes, seconded. Any further discussion? For the roll call vote, Counsel Heistin?
Counsel Heistin votes aye.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Beal?
Beal votes yes. Thank you.
Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Mayor McInerney votes yes as well. Motion passed, it's unanimous. Thank you, folks.
So just to be clear, unless I hear any objection, any councillors, the presumption is that I will go and issue the abatements as we have previously discussed. I don't see the opposition to that, so that's why I would.
Excellent. Okay, we have one item of old business tonight. That's Ordinance number 2020-07, and all we're looking to do tonight is to reschedule the public hearing on this to July 15, 2020, and this is our proposed regulations regarding the stormwater drainage system. This is currently under review by legal counsel, and we aren't quite ready to take it up yet. If somebody found me speaking. So we're just simply seeking to reschedule this public hearing to July 15. So unless there are any questions, somebody has a, like to make a motion, is Counsel Prentice's hands up?
Sure, I'll move that the Lebanon City Council hereby reschedules the public hearing for Proposed Ordinance 2020-07 to repeal and replace City Code Chapter 124, use of public stormwater system, to Wednesday, July 15, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, remote via Microsoft Teams.
Thank you. Someone like to second that? Counsel Broner, seconded?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, certainly. Counsel Sykes, please.
I understand that we are rescheduling this, and that's a straightforward manner. The motion, however, talks about meeting being via Microsoft Teams, and my question is, the governor's authorization for these types of meetings, which is part of his proclamation, his emergency order number four, expires on June 30. Are we going to be able to continue to do meetings on Zoom at that time?
Yes, Emergency Order Number 12 is still in effect and will remain in effect as long as the emergency remains in effect pursuant to the governor.
Okay, I guess I need to do some more homework then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Take a voice vote on this. Counsel Heistin?
Counsel Heistin votes aye.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Counsel Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Counsel Beal?
Beal votes yes.
Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Mayor McInerney votes aye, so that is a reschedule to the 15th of July. Okay, we have a couple of items of new business tonight, and both of them relate to discussions of surplus property. So I'd like the staff to go ahead and make a presentation on the first one, which I believe is at Fosh Avenue.
Yes, Deputy City Manager Paul Mayville will speak on that.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, yes, so in this one and in 9B, we've gotten requests from separate property owners to purchase property budding or adjacent to their current properties. So this one, excuse me, located on Fosh Avenue, Mr. William Corret had requested that he be permitted to purchase the property. So the circumstances with both of these are a little bit different because So the circumstances with both of these are a little bit different because they also include a discontinuance of an existing city right-of-way. Those requests are not part of this agenda item, but will be brought forward to the council at the July 1 meeting. So you'll see on the maps that have been included with the agenda packets that there's discontinuance of road and the deeming surplus of these parcels. So this particular piece of property was acquired through tax deed way back in 1959. The parcel's less than a quarter acre in size, and it's located directly adjacent to Interstate 89 North and the unbuilt portion of Fosh Ave. So that area back there in that neighborhood ended up being developed differently than originally approved. So unless anybody has any questions, I think that that basically...
We lost Paul. So what we're dealing today, if I get this correctly, is not the discontinuance of the city right-of-way, but the potential for deeming surplus, a discrete parcel of property that we have owned for over half a century, that is, abuts Mr. Corret's property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And it directly abuts 89.
Okay. And we'll deal with the discontinuance of the road right-of-way on July 1?
Correct. Well, you'll be asked to schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in August, and we'll go through the process like we normally would for what would be a Class 6, even though this is not a Class 6.
Okay. So let's deal with this one first. Councillors, this is basically a discussion, and if we approve this, allowing the staff to take action. We're going to, we would declare this a surplus property. We would authorize a manager basically to convey it to the budding property owner or to enter into discussions with the budding property owner for purposes of purchasing this piece of property from the city. Mr. Corret is here. Yes, okay. Mr. Corret, this is not a public hearing, but you're certainly welcome to speak to this if you'd like. Just dot star six, Mr. Corret, if you wish to speak on your phone. Star six.
This is Bill.
Yes, good evening.
How are you today?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I don't, everything seemed like it was spoken to by the previous speaker. I am interested in purchasing the properties abutting me. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay.
But that's about it. I'm on the call, I'm listening.
Okay. Councillors, do any of you have any questions regard to this property or Mr. Corret? This is a fairly routine action that we take periodically.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Sykes.
So the parcel that's under consideration is 7852.
Correct.
Has the, will the owner of 7851, or is that Mr. Shrett? I'm not sure where he lives and, are there two separate owners?
Yeah, I believe it's 7851.
Yes.
Ah, okay. Okay.
And then it's the interstate after that.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just I was concerned that, I just, it seemed close to an existing house. I wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, I didn't want someone else to be concerned about it and not have an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Councillors, anyone else on this one?
This is Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Can you please just clarify? So there's one, there's one drawing or one map where it looks like it's just the discontinued road that's shaded in yellow. And then there's another map where there's the road, that's the discontinued portion of the road that's shaded yellow, and then there's the outline of the parcel 7852 that is in yellow. What exactly are we deeming surplus property?
7852.
7852, which will also include a portion of the discontinued road.
We won't be discontinuing the road until August, so that's not part of the discussion tonight, just simply the disposition of this parcel. We'll deal with the discontinuance of the road in a separate meeting.
I understand we'll deal with the discontinuance of the road in the future, but are we selling that portion of the road? So it's 7852 plus a portion that right now appears to be the road right-of-way?
It's not a matter of selling. It'll revert back to the property owner on each side of that. The road will get divided in half, that, the path that which is the road, it gets divided in half back to the property on each side. Right, it's not part of this transaction. No, it's not part of this transaction. We don't, we don't sell those. We simply split it down the middle, and it gets divided between the owners on either side. I believe that's what the state law...
The sound is, the sound from city hall chamber, from council chambers is a little distorted, I think, because you're not using microphones close to you. So I'll just reiterate so I make sure I understand. Tonight, we are talking about deeming 7852 surplus property so that we can move forward and sell it to Mr. Corret. And then in the future, we will be addressing the issue of the portion of the road that will be discontinued. And then at some, at some point, should the council agree to discontinue that portion of the road, it will be split in half and divided between the 7851 and 7853. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Thank you. I'm in favor of moving forward with this this evening. It seems very reasonable to me, and I don't see any reason why that roadway would not be discontinued since it was presumably laid out before the highway was, the highway went through there. So I, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. I have a quick question. I noticed that lots 7850, also a lot 7852, does that particular lot owner have... We send notices out to all the budding property owners. Okay. Okay, so goes it, notices will go out to... They didn't go out. Okay. So 7850 knows about this as well as 7851. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion? Yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Heistin?
For the Conservation Commission, I was reviewing the property to see if there's any conservation needs or concerns, and didn't appear to be any reason why the city would want to hang on to this. So I'm totally in favor of passing it on to Bill.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion? Yes, Counselor Broner?
For the purpose of giving Tax Map 78, Lot 52, located on Folk Avenue, Lebanon, as surplus state property, and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said property. We hereby resolve, at the Lebanon City Council, after review and comment by the Lebanon School District, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and members of the city staff, hereby authorize the city manager to convey and in manner consistent with council policy CC-102, city real property transaction. Property identified as Tax Map 78, Lot 52, located on Folk Avenue, Lebanon.
Someone like to second that?
Second.
Counselor Heistin seconds. Any further discussion? Take a roll call vote. Counselor Heistin? I just say one thing. Certainly. I just want to make sure you understand what this means. So I'm going to go negotiate that, and I'm going to conduct the sale. The way it's written right now, that means I'm not coming back in front of you. So as long as you're comfortable. If you're not, obviously, you can do something different. You can have me come back. Is anyone uncomfortable with this?
So can I just...
Our hearing now? Yes, certainly. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So the way that we have done it in the past is this is the motion that has been put forward to give you the authorization, or give the manager authorization to convey the property. But then, once a purchase and sales is agreed to, then he would, you know, come back with the authorization for that amount of money, is what has been done in the past.
Right, that's just how it sits, so I want to make sure you understand that. So the motion is phrased in such a manner that the manager would not be coming back, that may be an oversight. Is there any interest in having the manager come back to us on this one?
On this particular, on this particular sale, I have no need for the city manager to come back, but I don't want that to set the precedent for the future because I may want the manager to come back on different, on different transactions. So can we just agree that it applies to this transaction tonight?
Certainly. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay. And I don't make that caveat every time we're in this spot for the very reasons Counselor Broner brought up, so that you still have the flexibility, the options, that you know if you're okay. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Heistin?
Counselor Heistin votes aye.
Thank you. Counselor Sykes?
Counselor Sykes votes yes.
Counselor Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Thank you. Counselor Prattis?
Prattis votes yes.
Thank you. Counselor Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Counselor Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Thank you. Counselor Beal?
Beal votes yes.
Thank you. Counselor Winnie?
Counselor Winnie votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes. So that passes unanimously. The second piece of... From Lot 3-100, which is located at Riverside Drive and Fellow's Hill Road. Paul, are you going to speak to this one as well?
Sure. Sorry. Yeah, so this request was put forward through, or by Dan Nash, on behalf of Robert and John Oaks that own property, actually, like, across Fellow's Hill. So if you look at the map, that is on page, sorry.
69.
It's like 68, 69. You can see that the parcel, 68 and 69. So the parcel that the Oaks own is on map 111, Lot 16. So Fellow's Hill comes in between that parcel and this parcel that's up for consideration. So again, we would be coming to you for the discontinuance of Fellow's Hill Road separate from this.
Okay. And Paula, there's a bore or something, a lay-in between 111-3 and this parcel, 111-3-1. Is that owned by someone else? Or is that part of Fellow's Hill Road?
That's part of Fellow's Hill Road.
Okay, so that's actually the right-of-way of Fellow's Hill Road between the two properties?
Yes.
Okay. And presumably, all the other abutters were noticed as well on this one?
Um, yes.
I'm looking at 111-4 and it looks like 111-16.
Yes.
Okay, they were also noticed. Okay. Councillors, any questions, comments on this one?
Again, I looked at this with the Conservation Commission, and we determined there wasn't any conservation issues there, and we saw very little reason why the city would not want to pass it on to the Oaks.
Okay, be negotiating with the Oaks to purchase it. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Heistin. Is, are either the Oaks or Mr. Nash on the phone?
All right now.
Apparently not. Okay. Councillors, any of...
Counselor Hill has a question?
Yes.
What is the, I guess, what is the developable, is this a developable lot?
Paula, would you like to address that?
Um, honestly, I don't know, like, the topography of the land. I don't know. I'm not certain how developable it really is. I mean, it has access on a city road, and depending on the zoning and how it would be configured, the size of it is non-conforming, I would say.
Yeah, it's in RL1, it looks like.
Yeah, so at less than one-half acre, RL1 has a three-acre minimum with no city sewer, so.
I also note that the, that the topographic plan on the page, preceding page 69, which is a page I'm running, shows what looks to be fairly steep and consistent topography from the level of Route 4 going down Fellow's Hill Road. If you look at those contour lines...
It's quite steep going up there, Tim.
Yeah, and if you go down two more pages, you go to page 71, you're probably, the picture there, it would be very difficult to fit a structure on this property.
There's considerable rise from the road going up to the bank, too.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty steep. Councillors, any other comments, questions?
I have one quick question.
Yes, Counselor Sykes.
As, I understand then that if and when this property is conveyed to Mr. Oaks, that the restrictions in terms of zoning will apply equally to this as it otherwise would.
Yes, it wouldn't be like it's exempt like state property any longer, once it changes hands to the... It is subject to the zoning requirements.
Okay.
With that in charge.
Yeah, that was. Thank you.
Any other questions?
It did seem, looking at it, as if it could be combined with the other land beside it and could become a larger lot, which then could be developed in some way.
Yeah, it's an odd lot in that even if you throw up the right-of-way to the, looks like to the east of it, boy, it's still awfully strangely shaped. Yeah, I guess if you combine it with the existing lot across the street, you know, maybe you could do something, but there's a house there already, too. So I think it's a tough piece of ground, but frankly.
I believe the, I believe the intent is that it would be joined with the Oaks property.
Okay. Counselor Broner?
Read your motion.
Yes, please.
For the purpose of deeming Tax Map 111, Lot 3-100, located on Fellow's Hill Road, Lebanon, as surplus state property, and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said property. We hereby resolve, at the Lebanon City Council, after review and comment by the Lebanon School District, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and members of city staff, hereby authorize the city manager to convey in a manner consistent with council policy CC-102, city real property transaction. Property identified as Tax Map 111, Lot 3-100, located on Fellow's Hill Road, Lebanon.
Someone like to second that? Counselor Prattis, would you like to second?
Yes, Counselor Prattis seconds.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do. Karen has a question. Karen Leo Hill has a question. What is the property that the Oaks own, is the property, is, do the Oakses own 111-16?
Yes.
Or do they, or do they own 111-3?
111-16.
Do they own 111-16? And which presently, and which the road appears, so it appears that there's a road in between 111-31 and 111-16, but it appears that the road dead-ends there and doesn't actually connect up to Dartmouth College, to Route 4. Is that right?
That's, that's correct.
I think that's just the...
And it sounds like, it sounds like Paula had thought that the intent was to add 111-31 to 111-16.
That's correct. After, after you guys take action to discontinue the, that portion of Fellow's Hill Road.
And so then, that creates a, that would create, if we were to do that, and if the planning board were then to merge the two parcels, that would create a conforming lot in RL1. Because right now, 111-16 is not conforming because it's 2.76, but you add... it's two point seven six, but you add the point four, and then it creates a conforming lot. Is that correct?
A lot of greater than three acres.
Right. Minimum lot size is three acres with no city sewer.
Yeah, so it would create a conforming lot on one or two currently non-conforming lots.
So, so I'll vote, I'll vote for this, but I guess, to be honest, on this, I would prefer for the city manager to come back to us after a purchase and sale is executed, is, is negotiated, so that we can talk about what a, what a fair price is for this parcel because it's not, it's surplus in the sense that the city doesn't have a particular need for it, but if it were to be sold at its assessed value for whatever the point four acres is, I'm not sure that that accurately reflects the real value of this parcel to that particular property owner. So I'm not opposed to selling it, and I think if the Oakses have a, a good use for it, you know, a, a better use than the city, that's great. But I, I think I, I'd be interested in, in, um, the council being able to have a discussion about what, what the fair price, what a fair price is for that property.
We can certainly do that. It's been common in the past, so we could certainly have the manager come back once he negotiates with the, uh, butter. That's fine. So I, I would not sign a P and S, what I would do is I just negotiate a price gap if we're able to do this. So let's do that. Okay, uh, Council Prentice seconded that motion. Any other questions? Take a voice vote. Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye.
Thank you. Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Hill?
Council Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Council Prentice votes yes.
Council Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Thank you. Council Beal?
Counselor Beal votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
And Mayor McNamara votes yes as well. That passes and the manager will come back to us once he's negotiated with the property owner. Our third and last new item of new business tonight is a warrant for civil forfeiture notice. Do you have any presentation? Actually, don't be the court.
So, um, last year was the first year that we've come to for, um, the issuance of the warrant for the civil forfeiture. And traditionally, we have done kind of a hard start date on this for dog licensing. Um, civil forfeiture fine is a twenty-five-dollar fine and a dollar late fee that accumulates each month, um, for any dog that remains unlicensed after May thirty-first. Um, due to the effects of COVID nineteen, we are hearing, um, a lot of concerns from our residents, and we're trying to address those in the best way possible. Um, people have had a difficult time getting into their veterinarians for a while. Um, you know, they were doing limited appointments, and so now that they're starting to open up again, it's harder to get in to get their rabies vaccinations. And vaccinations are a key piece of being able to procure a dog license. So within the confines of the law, um, Sean and I were talking, and we were able to determine that we could push the date out for these fines to start to July tenth. Um, again, traditionally, we started beginning of June with this, but we're trying to give some leeway to our customers to not have to pay those fines. Uh, we did send a, a round of reminder letters to people to let them know. And initially, I had actually given the deadline of tomorrow, thinking that I would come to you for tonight being the date to start the fine. Um, but we would like to push it out to July tenth, and then we'll notify the residents of that should you approve it.
Councillors, any questions on this? It seems fairly straightforward. Just, just want to clarify, this is, it's, it's a requirement. It's not optional. What we did is we, as Kristen said, we pushed it, pushed it as far forward as we can to give people more time, but it is statutory provision. It's not, not optional for us, unfortunately.
Yeah, we have no discretion to waive these. So once we say, okay, we're charging fines, that's it. We have to charge them. And we, I've actually been trying to work with our clerks association to work with the governor and see if we could do something about this. And unfortunately, it has not occurred. So this is the best way to do it for people.
Okay. Councillors, any questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
Um, sorry, Counselor Zook here. Um, I just wanted to point out, too, that folks kind of got hit with a double whammy. Not only was it, you couldn't get into the vet, but the, um, the clinics were canceled for obvious reasons. But that was sort of your good, you know, licenses are due in two days. You can bring your dog to City Hall on a Saturday.
Yes.
That was obviously not able to be held.
Yep.
Thank you. Someone like to make a motion?
Oh, make a motion?
Yes, Council Beal?
I move that the Lebanon City Council hereby issues a warrant to City Clerk Kristen Kinniston, authorizing the issuance of a civil forfeiture for each dog which remains unlicensed at the close of business on Friday, July ten, twenty twenty.
Someone like to second that? Council Prentice?
Counselor Hill.
Council Hill would like to second it? Okay. Any further discussion? Council Heistin?
Council Heistin votes aye.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Thank you. Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Broner?
Broner votes yes.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Council Beal?
Uh, Beal votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Mayor McNamara votes yes. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us down to city manager reports. So just a couple of items. Um, through the month of May, revenues are up three twenty-two percent. We expected they were going to be down, but they're still up three twenty-two percent. So I guess that is good news and that's overall revenues. Um, uh, Counselor Hill had brought up, I think we
Can't hear you.
Citizen inquiries about that. And I've had spread inquiries for, since I've been here about the issues of broadband service throughout the city.
Sean, we watched you for part of that. Could, could you go back and start over?
Yeah, okay. So Counselor Hill, uh, I think it was probably a couple of months ago, brought up the issue of broadband service in the city, the importance of that. We still have areas in our city where, uh, broadband service is simply not available. There is internet service, but there's not really high-quality service, especially for people who need to be able to do, uh, uh, Zoom meetings for school, for education, people that are doing telehealth, uh, meetings, and just regular business under COVID nineteen. Uh, the, the circumstances of this pandemic have highlighted that particular issue. What we have done is we assigned the planning department to actually look into this. Rebecca Owens is the associate planner who's been assigning that task and has actually, uh, developed quite a bit of research that she provided me today. Inquiries with, uh, consolidating with almost no success there and with, uh, Xfinity, which we've had a limited success, uh, basically to get some basic information about where we're at in our status. The, uh, governor talked today about the fifty million dollar broadband, uh, grant. And I don't want to talk about that as the mayor is
Yeah, the last mile, yeah. I mean, he's, I, he, he said today that, you know, the purpose of this fifty million dollars is not to give everybody five G or four G service. It's rather to give service largely in rural areas that are currently either unserved or underserved. And as the manager said, I mean, this all came up as a result of stay-at-home and just folks who are, um, really inequitably treated in terms of access to internet. So his concept, the way I understood it today, was that, um, this is intended to be the last mile, is to get, to get some internet services out to those folks who are either unserved or underserved. The problem for us, it's really, he didn't directly say this, but really isn't intended for cities, and he mentioned towns, um, where they have no service at all in particular. That was going to be their focus. It was also unclear about who actually applies for the grant. It's going to be the communications companies or it's going to be municipalities. And when he, he made this statement to the effect of something like, I didn't look at it from the town or city perspective, so I don't get the sense that we actually can apply for those. While that remains to be seen. He said that he would make sure a guidance document came out by Friday, so we're looking forward to seeing that. We're going to make sure that we can do it weekend. Make sure that they get the service that they need. If you have issues with, I can look at several inquiries. So there's, there's that. Um, second issue I want to talk about, I've been working with the clerk in regards to, we have two elections coming up. September eighth, which is a very short time away from us, and November third, uh, we have been trying to work with the Secretary of State's office with, uh, not really a whole lot of success. Uh, also with the H and M, and I brought this up with the governor again today on our, our phone call, that, uh, we need some answers as to whether or not we can consolidate down to one polling place. Because we're having difficulty getting poll workers to work there. We have people that are, that are, you know, of sufficient age, that they're more at risk for COVID nineteen. So we're concerned about that. And, you know, some of them don't want to put themselves at risk, which is very reasonable to understand that. So that's going to be tough for us to be able to, to staff three polling places. If we can consolidate that down to one, it would be a lot easier. And also, the, uh, the, the ability for people to use absentee ballots for basically any reason, although that's not exactly how the wording is, but I know the Senate is working on a different version of that. We'll see what comes of that. Uh, what we expect will have fewer people that'll actually go to the polling place and more people will fill out absentee ballots. So that's what we, uh, working towards, trying to get a merger of them, allow a city to do that, or any town that has more than one polling place. So that we, because not only that, these people are going to have to wear masks and gloves, and that gets rather fatigue rather quickly. So we'll have to rotate shifts out. It's going to be an all-hands-on-deck approach. We're going to be using every city employee who actually resides in the city, because they have to live in the city, to work those polls, including me. Whatever Kristen signs me to do, when we sweep and form, I don't know, or whatever it is, I'll be doing, uh, doing that on that particular day. I know some of you are obviously involved in elections yourself. You cannot participate. But if there's any of you who, uh, might be available on September eighth or the third, and you're not involved in one of the campaigns, we could use the additional help because, uh, it's going to be a long day to do that. Whether we have three polling places or one, it's still going to be challenging at the statutory requirements to get that done. So the governor indicated to us this morning that he has been down to see the Secretary of State on this on a couple of occasions. He understands the concerns, the frustration, and the time factor that we're dealing with in trying to get ourselves ready, particularly for the September election. And he assured us that after we get off the phone tonight, he was going to walk back down the hall to speak to the Secretary of State again, and hopefully we'll have some answer this next week or so. So the other issue I brought up with the governor was the issue of the three emergency orders that the Hampshire Municipal Association asked for. One of those applies to us, and that's the ability to have the flexibility of tax payment plans that I spoke to you about before. And I impressed upon him that timing is absolutely critical. July second is when our tax bills are due. Folks have to be able to apply for that. And they issued that by our assessing board, the payment plan, because on, on the eighth is when those interest rate start up at eight percent. So we have very little time left to get that done. So he, uh, said that he would work on that and try to get that signed so that we could move forward on that. That really is the only mechanism that we can provide of some degree of taxpayer relief, property taxpayer relief. And also ensure we get these revenues coming in from the city for those folks that are in difficult spots. And that's all that I have.
I, I have a question or a comment to make about a polling place in May. So I, I understand the challenges that the city faces, and I'm not unappreciative of that, having had a spouse who was a poll worker for many, many, many years, and she has chosen recently not to do this anymore. Mindful of that, though, I'm also know that people don't have the option currently of taking the day off to go and vote. And if we have only one polling place, and they can only come at a limited amount of hours, I'm very concerned that one polling place will restrict the numbers of voters who actually have the opportunity to vote, who don't pay attention to the fact that they should get an absentee ballot. And I'm just going to express that concern, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about this.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
So we're currently looking at options where if we were to consolidate one or we're looking for very large venues. Right now, we're, um, trying to get a deal with the airport. We can use one of the giant airport hangars where people could be able to space out. Um, anyone could, everyone could come in. There'd be more room to get people through, plenty of parking. Um, so we are taking that into consideration. Obviously, it would move us to one location that would be too small because of social distancing and things like that. But I really want to have the option of a, of a large venue if possible, because then I can put all my resources in one place. I have all my staff that I can use. I'll have all my PPE, everything else I need in one place. So I just want the option to explore it right now. It might not be feasible, but I, I feel confident that we can find a way to make it work if we're allowed to.
Yes. So I, I wasn't saying don't. I just, I'm expressing some concerns that I hope you will take into consideration.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Winnie? Oh, George, Counsel Sykes, if you're finished?
Yes, Counsel Winnie?
Is there an, a memo or something we can send out to people that the city is looking for volunteers? I'm happy to volunteer if I'm eligible and able. I have to check my schedule, but I know there seems to be an, a slight upswell of, um, sort of political engagement lately, so, um, maybe we can harness that and, and get some new volunteers out to the polling places. So I'd, I'd be happy to send stuff out to my network.
Yep. So I, I am planning to address that. I'm, I'm going to actually be, um, starting with the department heads and getting a memo out to them. And then I'm going to also put something out on the website, trying to get, um, more people engaged. I am actually going to be losing a moderator in work for one after the September election, so I'm going to need a permanent replacement for her. Um, so I'm, I'm considering how I'm going to address this, but I, I want to get as much information out there as possible to people so that I can get help.
So we're, it's going to be just in time trend. It's going to have to occur for folks working the polls, depending upon what their task is. And we got to line that up in advance. But the problem is, we, we've got to have some guidance from the state as to what they're going to allow us to do in that window, of course, get shorter and shorter every day. That's why if we could at least get an answer as to when we're going to get an answer, that would be helpful. And that's why we pressed that with the governor today.
May I make one more comment?
Yes, absolutely.
If, if any of you have any constituents that are coming to you with questions about elections, concerns, please pass them my way, because the more I know, the, the more I can address with people on the website. And I'd like to try to get some videos out there to show people how to do absentee ballots, because not everyone knows how to do it. So the more you tell me, the more I can help people.
Why? Oh, thank you. I didn't know that.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, certainly. Council Sykes?
Yeah, when we, when we get to moving on about, maybe councillors reporting on other bodies that they are, I just wanted to share some news about county government's budget, which was voted on, uh, on Friday of last week. On Mon, excuse me, it was voted on Tuesday afternoon and
Okay.
Just because I know there was a lot of concern about the budget, the paper copy of the budget that went out. Um, county, county executive board has made some recommendations to bring before the full delegation. That full delegation vote will take place on Monday the twenty-second at nine o'clock, either in person or via Zoom. The current recommendation from the executive board is that they will have a budget of forty-eight million, five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten dollars, with the amount to be raised by taxes, and this is the important number, twenty-six million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-eight. And that represents a decrease of point four-two percent of the amount to be raised by taxes in fiscal year twenty. So
Nice.
That's a, that's a big difference between what the paper copy was. Was that a three-point-four percent increase? We are actually looking at a decrease of point four-two percent.
That's great. Thank you very much for reporting that. Councillors, any other representatives from other bodies or any other comments? Council Prentice?
I have two things. Um, and actually, I'm getting a little sunshine here in my, uh, my little desk gear right now, so I want to make sure that I don't miss anything. Um, I've written down. So two things. One is, I think we're all well aware of the, um, the national state, and now we're looking at, you know, a local or having a local dialogue about law enforcement, about, um, how, um, they're, you know, discussions about how they're deployed, about use of force, about de-escalation tactics. Um, there's, and I think that it's important, um, that, you know, we, and I, I know that I, I've spoken up about this in the past couple of weeks, that there's, um, you know, a briefing, and I, I think we've got one planned, um, for the public to know that, you know, we're going to talk to Chief, are, are we going to talk to Chief Mello, um, and get are we going to talk to Chief Mello and get briefed on, you know, kind of the status of law enforcement today in response to what's happening throughout the country here in Lebanon.
Can I speak to that? Yes, that's scheduled for July, the July council meeting, July 22nd. No, July 1st, July 1st, the next meeting.
Great. I think that, I think that that's great. Sorry, I'm blocking the sun. I think that's great. Thank you very much for being proactive about that.
And as you, as you also know, the governor has, has appointed a commissioner, is at the verge of appointing a commissioner, to study this topic as well. He has a couple more people to appoint as of this afternoon. He was going to finalize that tomorrow, I believe, and he wants his commission to start meeting as soon as next week, and have their report completed in 45 days. So there's also an activity, activity going on at the state level as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor McNamara. So, the other thing is 12A. I know some other counselors have gotten, I remember Counselor Sykes was talking about this maybe at the last meeting, and I wasn't quite sure what he meant, but recently, driving 12A pretty regularly, it's, there is some confusion about where to go. Like, people don't understand the middle lane, and actually, it's just, I think it's related to the markings and how they've changed. What's the, are you getting many calls on this? This is a state thing, it's not a local thing, but it's--
No, it's a local thing.
It is local? Okay.
Yeah, so the answer is, the answer is yes to the calls. The temporary markings were not reflective of what the permanent markings are, and if the permanent markings haven't gone down, they'll be going down soon. I did see the little plastic tabs that they use to delineate where the markings will be out on Saturday, so I think that's going to get painted very soon. Yes, the construction company, and it's a subcontract to a 15th company that does the painting. We don't, as a last one, we didn't have a date by which they're going to come back to do that. So the issue was the left-hand turns in things like McDonald's. I had a couple of constituents contact me, it's amazing what gets people riled up, but I was able to assure them both that it will, there will be left-hand turn lengths. It was a temporary situation which did not reflect what the ultimate condition is going to be.
Right. And Mayor McNamara, this is Paula. I did, I got an email today on, on update from the project manager down there, and that will be done tomorrow. The striping will be done tomorrow night.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the update.
Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to give, oh, I'll go after Counselor Winnie.
Counselor Winnie?
All right, thank you. The Lebanon Airport Tech Park Tiff district had its first meeting last night. We do have a couple of vacant positions, both of which need to be filled by Lebanon residents. One is for property owner occupant, and one is for a citizen rep. So, if you know anyone who might be interested, please refer them. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Bila?
Thank you, yes. I just wanted to give an update. The task force related to fair and impartial policing slash--
Yes.
Yep, the Welcome to Lebanon ordinance task force has had two meetings so far, and has another meeting scheduled for next week. The task force, I think, has gotten off to a, a good start, although it's early, and we're kind of just getting our, getting our legs under us, but we've agreed that we're going to meet every other Tuesday over the course of the summer with a goal to have recommendations to the city council by the end of September, which is consistent with the schedule that the mayor had requested us to do. I have, I'm dedicating a, at least a half an hour portion of each meeting for public so that anyone at any point who feels that they would like to weigh in on this can just plan to stop in on a Tuesday, on one, any of our Tuesday meetings, and share anything that they think we might like to hear. I thought it might be better to just have public testimony on an ongoing basis, rather than holding off and taking public testimony at the end, for example, and ending up having many people who would have to be squeezed into a short period of time. So if anyone hears from constituents, or is communicating with people who are interested in this topic, please spread the word. The meetings are all posted on the city website, and we are very, you know, not to be too cliche, but we're very welcoming. So we, we hope to hear from many interested members of the public over the course of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing none? I think Council Warner wants to make a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Do you have a second to that? Yes, can somebody speak up?
Hey!
Council Heist seconds.
Hit me to it.
Okay. Council Heist?
Yes.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Thank you. Council Hill?
Oh, votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Warner?
Warner votes yes.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Council Bila?
Bila votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Mayor McNamara votes yes. Enjoy the remainder of your evening. Thank you. Good night.
Where's my dog? Eh, she's gone.